I will now call the March 5, 2012 Blue Springs City Council Meeting to order. If you would stand, observe a moment of silence, and we have Boy Scout Troop 763 from Chapel Hill Presbyterian Church will come and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and I will cue you on when to start it, okay?
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Scout Troop. Come back and see us again. We want to welcome all of you in attendance, as well as those that might be watching on Cape of TV 7, to tonight's Blue Springs City Council Meeting. The next item is the consent agenda, or if there are items that need to be pulled. If not, I accept a motion for approval.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Bowerman.
Aye.
Carrie with Councilman Fowler and Councilman Levesey, excellent.
Councilman Levesey is away on personal business. His brother's getting married, and Councilman Fowler called, and he's running a little late because of job responsibilities, so we're going to skip Items 4 and 5 and move down to Item 6, which is a public hearing on a redevelopment modification plan for Copper Leaf Village. Mr. Johnson.
Your Honor, this is a continuation of the public hearing that we had at the last council meeting, and for a public hearing, RMP-1-12-3236, I'd like to offer four exhibits. That includes Exhibit Number 1, a city council information form with attachments, staff report with attachments, site location map, vicinity map, updated publication as advertised in Blue Springs Examiner, January 28, 2012, 185-foot notification map, names, addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site, a letter sent to property owners notifying them of the public hearing. Exhibit Number 2, letter of support from Steve Roberts of Godfather Pizza, Inc. Exhibit Number 3, letter of support from Autumn Tallon, office manager of Highway 7 Chiropractic, and Exhibit Number 4, letter of support from Doug Steger, Kathy King and Cheryl Hamm of Missouri Farm Bureau Insurance Services. These are all the exhibits we have on behalf of this public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Ms. Allen, on behalf of the city.
Yes, thank you, Honor, and members of council. Before this evening is a request from Kevin Fitzpatrick of Copper Leaf Village, LLC, to amend their previously approved redevelopment modification plan, originally approved in 2005. The applicant went before the Planning Commission at the February 13 meeting. There are four specific, four separate items that the applicant is now requesting waivers or modifications to from that original approval in 2005. As you know, Center Point Clinic recently located in the new building, the new portion of the building, the north end there, and quickly seeing most of the tenant spaces fill up. With that, the applicant was aware of some deficiencies in completing the original modification plan from 2005, has made some efforts to complete those, however, there are these four that remain, and the applicant is requesting your consideration of removing these requirements as part of the redevelopment modification plan process. The four specific items are identified at the beginning of your council information form. I can go into them in more detail if you'd like, but essentially, they're looking at removing a portion of the fence that is typically required between residential area and commercial area at the north end of the property, abutting the neighbor immediately to the west, as well as two landscaping areas in the front of the main shopping center building at the western terminus of those two main east-west entry driveways off of 7 Highway. The third is request to deviate or waive the requirement for the installation of mechanical equipment roof screening, which was to be located on the northernmost building, where Center Point Clinic is located, and finally, requesting the approved trash enclosures that were to be located behind the main shopping center kind of set into that hill, if you will, that that requirement be waived. The Planning Commission did have specific dialogue on each of the four items. As laid out in the staff recommendations section, Page 2 of your council information form, we provided information in terms of how those motions were made and the votes taken on each individual one. So the Planning Commission chose to pass along a recommendation to you tonight on each of the four items individually, rather than corporately as a group. They agreed to recommend waiving the fence requirement unanimously. They also recommending to waive the roof screening requirement, and the request to waive the trash enclosure requirement was denied, however, they did recommend a modification to that based on staff's recommendation, as you read in the staff report, to require just some screen walls, essentially at either end, north and south, to block view of the trash dumpsters from Hearns on the north and from Artie Mize in the south. So rather than your typical full 360 enclosure, look at just some screen walls to limit visibility from the public rights of way. And finally, there was no, they did not recommend approval of the final requirement, which was the, in your listing here, actually, the second item, and that is the landscaping in front of, essentially of Godfather's Pizza and Sprint. Those are the two areas that would be impacted. Approximately four to six parking spaces in each location would be impacted. So there was no recommendation to remove that requirement. So that's, that's the long and the short of the requests there. Again, the applicant has been diligent in recent months to make efforts to bring everything into compliance minus these four. I did not see the applicant at the beginning of the meeting, but perhaps may be here shortly, but I'll certainly stand for any questions in lieu of the applicant's attendance here in the meeting.
Yeah, the staff report I'm looking at has five instead of four, and it looks like three were voted on yes and two no.
Yes, no good point. The, two of those are, I don't want to say duplicates, but one was to waive the trash enclosure requirement entirely, which was the applicant's request, and that motion failed to waive the trash enclosure, any kind of trash enclosure or screening. However, a subsequent motion was made to require just two screen walls in lieu of full trash enclosure. So the list there shows five separate motions, but four different items that were discussed.
Any other questions? Ms. Allen?
Your Honor.
Yes, Councilman Edmondson?
On the landscaping, if I read the notes right, they're wanting to reduce it from like 332 down to 12 units, is that correct? Or 320 to 12 units is what the applicant requested?
I'm looking here, Page 5 of 7, the Planning Commission's staff report. Yes, total amount of landscape plant units above that which is required is reduced from 332 to 12. I'll defer to Mr. Hawley if there's any difference in that. Is that correct? Okay.
Which would be, that's...
They meet the landscape requirement on the original approval. As part of their request for modification, they exceeded the landscape plant unit requirement by 312, I think it was.
Right.
With this change, they will still exceed it, but only by, I think it's 12 plant units, but they still meet, meet the requirement, so to speak.
So in other words, they've exceeded in certain areas, they've got more along the buffers, along 7 Highway, that type of thing, so they're going to want to back out of the landscaping in the parking lot area to allow for more parking because they're wanting to reduce the number of islands? Is that what I'm getting at?
Essentially, yes. Right now, there are no parking lot islands. I could point to them. These are the two areas that were required to have these parking lot islands, and there was going to be landscaping within those. Those islands are not there at all. It's the previous or existing condition, which is just parking all the way along the front of the main center building. As Mr. Hawley noted, they exceed the required landscaping for the overall site, and even with the removal of those landscaping areas, those islands, they still exceed the quantity required. It's simply the fact that they proposed to install these, that was a part of their approved plan, was to have those two islands there. They're now requesting to modify that plan. It's not specifically a code requirement as much as what their plan was approved as.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the council?
I'm sorry, I did have a question. If, now, right now, it's being recommended that we, from the Planning Commission, that we not waive, that we not reduce it.
Correct.
If the overall site is still going to exceed the total requirements for the project as a whole, what was the rationale for not...
Very good question. The, exactly, the rationale, there was quite a bit of discussion with the Planning Commission. Those two islands, we call them landscape islands, but then, that's essentially a secondary reason for them is to hold landscaping. The primary reason is for traffic conflicts, minimizing traffic conflicts. If you look, the idea was to have, to remove any kind of parking as folks enter the site from either the north or the south, east-west drive, that they wouldn't have any conflict with cars backing into essentially them entering and vice versa. So the idea was to essentially remove parking from the end of this drive here, as well as the one in the north. Now, you may have seen, the applicant did provide three separate letters in support of this waiver from three separate business owners in the center, noting that the parking is used and useful, and obviously, their preference would be to retain the parking as is, but again, exactly, it's not as much a code requirement as it was a part of their approved plan, so they're requesting to remove that from their approved plan. So it's really a traffic issue more than it is a landscaping issue.
Do we have any evidence of, in the current configuration, any, you know, any accidents or...
It would be simply anecdotally, the applicant did state that there had not been any conflicts or accidents as a result of the parking in that location.
Your Honor, one other thing I'd like to say for the record. I have had a meeting with the applicant prior to this application being made, where some of these issues were discussed, and I also had a meeting with the homeowner who, whose house is where the fence area that is in discussion was, and just wanted to disclose that in the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Fowler?
Yeah, Your Honor, I guess this, this application to modify the plan, in the big scope of the development agreement for the whole incentive and everything, there's been outstanding issues on that, and what is the status of that, of the big picture there?
Mr. McDonald?
Setting aside the actual work that has to be done, that this is the completion of or waiver of, there was going to be a TDD, and that was not ever formed. The development agreement will have to be amended to get rid of the TDD, and at one time, they were talking about possibly replacing it with a CID, so if they're going to want to talk about that, they would need to do that in order to finish everything up.
Okay. I guess that may be a good question, is to know, is there, is this, whenever we do that bigger picture issue of incentives, are we going to come back and say, okay, I want more incentive to do the things that I'm no longer accountable to doing anymore, or is this going to get rid of that requirement, so instead of say this stays the same, kind of opens up that issue to me?
I've had conversations with, with the lawyer for Copper Leaf about entering into an agreement to start that procedure, but we really haven't started the procedure, so I can't really answer that question. I'm not aware that there is going to be any ask for an increase, but I'm not promised that there won't be either, so I can't really say.
Any other questions of the council? Okay, thank you, Ms. Allen.
Thank you.
Is the applicant present and wish to come and be sworn in?
Kevin Fitzpatrick, 6431 Mission, Kansas.
Hi, thank you for hearing this. I believe, to answer Councilman Fowler's questions, these are the last four items we need to clear up to clear the deck on this. Just a little anecdotal story on the TDD request, which is something else. We did put the median in. We went to the state of Missouri and requested permission to put the median in. The TDD requirements in the state of Missouri require you to get MoDOT approval before you ask for the TDD. We got approval to put the median in, but for some reason, we were singled out here to be deemed that we did not get the approval from the Board of Governors of MoDOT to put the median in. So the TDD on this project was to pay for the median. We paid for the median, put it in at your request, but the funding mechanism for that got denied by the state of Missouri. So, to my knowledge, it's the only time that procedure's been followed, and again, we, we thought sincerely that when we got permission from the state to put the median in, we were getting permission from MoDOT to do that. We were also told, I believe it's correct to say that, we have to get these four items cleared up before we can come back in front of you and address the CID-TDD issue. So it's our hope to do that tonight. We do think that, that these four items should be approved as, as requested, and I'm here to answer any questions that might have come up.
Any questions, Mr. Fitzpatrick? Councilman Fowler?
Yeah, I guess for me, it'd be good to know your intentions on the, on the incentive. Are you, are you going to come back and ask for a higher incentive or anything, or...
No, no, I think what we'll, as Mr. McDonald referred to, we'll come back and say, the state turned down the TDD request.
Right.
The council approved it. Many of our tenants have language in it that acknowledges it, but the state turned it down. We've gone as far as hire lobbyists, lawyers, to talk to the state, and, and we think, again, that the, probably the easier way, and that same effect, is to replace the TDD with the exact amount of incentive with a CID, no economic difference, other than several years' loss of TDD revenue.
Any other questions? Councilman Bowerman?
Based upon the Planning Commission action, three of those four, well, two were agreed upon, one was modified, but what are your plans for the fourth one, the landscaping?
Well, the landscape islands that, is that what you referred to? We, we're requesting here today that you allow us not to put those landscape islands in.
Understand that.
Okay.
What are your plans if we don't?
Put the landscape islands in. I really don't have, I really cry and then, you know, complain and kick, kick lockers and then put the landscape islands in. Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience like to speak in favor of? In favor of? In opposition to, I think, Mr. Ford up? Come on up. I almost missed you with a quick draw on that one. Would you be sworn in, please?
Yes. Dennis Gabriel, 800 Northwest Hearns Avenue, Blue Springs. I'm here talking about the fence. The gist of the fence for me is that it would look stupid on, in that particular location, and I don't know a good reason to put a fence there because sometimes I mow his a little bit, and sometimes he mows mine a little bit, and we don't really care. I've got trees there, and it's not an eyesore from my perspective, and that's pretty much it. Do you have any questions for me?
Are there any questions? Councilman Edmondson?
Just to make sure, your, your property sits a butt to the back of, of the development property we're talking about, is it?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Dennis, you were talking about putting in a side entrance on your property. You still going to do that?
I've already done it.
Oh, well, there you go. Then the fence would be in your way.
Yes, it would.
Okay.
I could put a gate there, but...
Any other questions? If not, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience like to speak in favor of?
My name is Jeremiah Johnson, and my address is 422 Northwest 62nd Street. That is in Topeka, Kansas. Zip code is 66617. I'm here today representing Godfather's Pizza. I'm a district manager for the company. This is in regards to the landscaping project in front of our restaurant. We've been tenants of Mr. Fitzpatrick for quite some time now. Great gentleman, very easy to work with. The proposed project in front of our restaurant would be very detrimental to our business. It's something that would eliminate forehead-on parking places, including one handicap. It is something that presents a very serious problem for us as far as convenience for our customers. As you may know, we're in, definitely in a business that's very competitive, and retaining business is something that's fairly hard to do in this economy. To our knowledge, we do not have any problems with the flow of traffic through there. Just in briefly thinking about it, maybe proposed yield sign or stop sign would be a good idea right on that entrance there. People would stop and take a look both ways. The parking there is, is somewhat difficult already, but taking away those parking places would make it very difficult for our tenants, our, excuse me, our customers.
Are there any questions? See you in nine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else that speaks in support of? In support of? Opposition to? Come up and be sworn in.
Michael Wayne Freeman, 513 Southeast Talgar Drive, Blue Springs, Missouri, 64014. To me, this is a very simple case. They came in with an agreement. We're giving them TIF dollars to reimburse them for this cost, and once again, we have people coming forward and saying, I changed my mind, let's renegotiate, I'm already three quarters way done to it. I think we need to stick with what the Planning Commission recommended, with the, certainly the, the trash enclosure and the bushes. If that gentleman has no problem with the fence, then I have no problem with the fence either. Just the short and sweet of it.
Are there any questions? See you in nine. Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in opposition to? In opposition to, close this public hearing. But anyone like to introduce it?
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill Number 4196, an ordinance approving the Copper Leaf Village amended redevelopment modification plan.
Let's move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye? Oh, wait, hold up, hold up.
Your Honor.
Could we have some discussion also?
Yeah, yeah. I'm trying to move it on, aren't I?
I know that. You're faster off tonight.
Discussion.
May I say something before?
Yes, yes, yes.
Before it's discussed. The way the ordinance is written, it follows the Planning Commission's recommendations, so if you were going to change any of their recommendations, we would have to modify it in some degree, depending on what you wanted to do.
Now, Councilman Edmondson?
Thank you.
You too.
And, and I guess that's why I'm going to jump in here. I normally would, don't necessarily feel the council should be overstepping the Planning Commission, but in, in this case, looking at the site, being a business in the community, you know how sometimes when you lay something out on paper and you talk about it, and you build it, and then it's successful, the reality of what you've done sinks in and you realize, oh, my gosh, you know, this is not going to work. I've been through this facility numerous, numerous times, and the item I'm looking at is the landscaping portion of it. They've already met what we need to do. To go back in and do these islands, while though it would be nice, attractive, I think it would be detrimental to the project, detrimental to the tenants that are there. This project is starting to fill up, starting to go, and they desperately need parking. If you go through there on a Saturday, the place is packed. So my motion would be to go with the applicant's original request to have the variance done on the landscaping, but keep everything else in there that the Planning Commission recommended.
Okay, is there any other discussion before I accept that, a motion? Other discussion on...
I'll have a discussion, not on that point, but I'll have a discussion on the item, yeah.
Okay.
So if you want to make, if he wants to make a motion for that.
Anyone else? Okay, you want to make a motion to amend it?
Do you want to add into this, or...
My take on it is going to be on across all of them, is that, you know, I'm, I'm concerned about us internal, our own internal procedure of piecemealing this, in other words, taking all the requirements and voting on them separate of the entire development agreement and, and any incentive and what may be happening there, because I don't think that you say to take away requirements before we start talking about the overall incentives that the taxpayers have involved here, you know? And, and that's a concern that I've had before on projects, so...
So yours does not affect his motion?
No, no.
Anyone else?
Councilman Fowler, just so you know, it was staff's request that it actually come to you in this fashion, because we didn't want the applicant to go to the trouble of refiling a TIF, a TIF application with modifications regarding the TDD or a CID, and have that application brought to you when there were outstanding items still remaining on the unfinished development plan. And so, from our perspective, we were trying to force the issue to have the item cleaned up from an implementation perspective before that other item hits you, but certainly, if the council decided to bundle it all together, we certainly wouldn't have a problem with that at all. But I wanted you to have some basis for why it came to you this way.
Appreciate it.
Any, any other comments before we ask for a second?
I was going to second his motion. But based on testimony from the Godfather's district manager, who said basically, if we make them stick to the landscaping requirement, it's going to hurt his business as opposed to help his business.
Right.
So in that spirit, I would second it.
Okay, we have a motion second. Is there further discussion? Okay, see you in nine. All in favor of the amendment, say aye. Close, no?
No.
Okay. My motion passes.
Second reading of Bill Number 4196 as amended, an ordinance approving the Copper Leaf Village amended redevelopment modification plan.
Should we vote on the first reading?
We have to vote on the first reading.
We have to vote on the first reading. Yeah. First, so you need to do a first reading?
Well, we need, yeah, we need to do a first reading as amended.
Yes.
Right, okay. You're going to read the amended.
Section two will be changed at the bottom of the page and it'll read, "The amended redevelopment modification plan, RMP 1-12-33236, submitted to the Planning Commission is approved with the following exception," instead of exceptions, "related to the requested modification set forth that," and then there'll be a deletion and it'll move on to approve trash enclosures that were to be located behind the main shopping center buildings shall not be waived but will be allowed to exist with screening that provides a visual barrier to them from RD highs and Hearns Street. So that they are not obvious to vehicles and pedestrians on those streets.
Okay, you've heard it, heard it red. Now we will have a motion to accept the first reading as amended.
I'll make a motion for that.
Okay, is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay. Further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no?
No.
Now, second reading of Bill Number 4196 as amended, an ordinance approving the Copperleaf Village amended redevelopment modification plan. Move the bill be approved on a second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Fowler?
No.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Bowerman?
Aye.
Councilman Povell?
Aye.
Carried with Councilman Levissay absence, giving our number 4377.
Okay, we took Items 6 and 7 out of order. Now we're going to go back to Items?
Items 4 and 5.
4 and 5. Items 4 is the presentation on the Woodschapel Road project.
Your Honor?
Mr. DeGrae.
Yes. Before we begin on this important topic, I'm going to request respectfully to abstain from dialogue and a vote because of the likelihood that my employer could be used in the future on this project as a supplier of materials.
Okay, thanks for that.
Thank you.
Duly noted. Mr. DeGrae.
Good evening, Your Honor, members of the City Council. Oliver DeGrae with the Public Works Department. Like to start off with an update of the bond projects and direct your attention to the screen. We last had this update a year ago and we do have some progress to report to the City Council. At that time, I'm sure we were showing Moreland School Road was narrowly complete. That project has been completed, is quite well-used, and our last traffic counts indicated about 400, 4,500 vehicles a day use that facility. So we're very pleased with that. Again, that was a project that was designed in-house. We had the Snybar wastewater treatment plant. This is an aerial view, a recent aerial view. It's a $23.5 million project. Our construction started in February of '10. At this point, we're over 85% complete and will be completed with this project this summer. Very pleased with what's going on there. Our next project, this is an aerial view of the intersection at Seven Highway and Colburn. And this project was opened up January 12th. You may recognize some of those august gentlemen standing there with scissors in hand in 2012, but that project has been opened with great success and we're extremely pleased with it. Now we get to the Woodschapel Road project. Again, this was part of the 2008 bond initiative. Our initial concept, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Our initial concept was certainly more straightforward than what we've evolved into, but the design process and new ideas internationally brought things to the table. And so it's actually been converted, is the language used here, to a comprehensive corridor project. We were dealing with, of course, ourselves, City of Independence, MoDOT, Federal Highway. A lot of approving entities were involved in it and we wound up with a diverging diamond concept, which has been used in Springfield. There are others on Front Street, but still, this is a very new concept and it's certainly going to improve the efficiency in the corridor. One of the key elements of getting the diverging diamond to work is the relocation of the South Outer Road, which is on the east side of Woodschapel Road. And that will no longer, once construction is complete, tie in between, well, at Carlfeld Drive, between the McDonald's and the convenience store. It's going to be corkscrewed between the bank and Pizza Hut and Waffle House and the Subway store and come out right across from Wise Guys to a new signalized intersection. And that will begin the queuing for the on-ramp and especially the important westbound on movement to I-70. The improvements for this project will be beginning north of Duncan Road and will continue down to just north of the railroad tracks. So when we originally brought this to the voters, we looked at four phases and basically we've combined, combined all four phases or three phases into one project. This is a rendering of Woodschapel, looking south at that intersection. You can kind of see, my glasses aren't that good, but you can see the Subway and the Waffle House. And so it's going to have a striking look, but the functionality is also something that the city can be excited about. So in summary, Moreland School Road project complete, Seven Highway and Colburn complete. Snybar treatment plant expansion on schedule for 2012 completion. And then the Woodschapel project has been bid. Construction to start this year and the next item on the agenda is to talk about the award of that project. So with that, we'll switch over to, we'll move from PowerPoint to.
I think it's safe to say that those projects that were completed were ASU, ahead of schedule and under budget.
Yes, sir.
Okay, which is good.
We'll begin with a bid tab. We did bid the Woodschapel project. Mine here. Okay, I'll just move this over. These are the results of the project bid tab. As you can see, we had one, two, three, four, five contractors that bid. The apparent little bid was CAT excavation and the second little bid was Miles excavating. The base bid for the project, which was everything from I-70 south, was $11,449,157 by CAT. Miles came in at 11,476,200 and so the differential or the delta on that was $27,000 on an $11.5 million bid. The alternate bid takes the project just north of I-70 to north of Duncan Road and includes the signalization of that intersection. And that bid, move that over for you, for alternate number one was 1.486 million by CAT and 1.633 million by Miles with a delta or differential of $147,730. So the total project differential for the $13 million project is $174,773.25, which is a difference of 1.35%. So these are the orders of magnitude that we're discussing when we're looking at the two contractors. Now what we've been asked to do in standard procedure is to request a work history from the contractors and based on that work history, make a recommendation. And that's what we've done. And what I'd like to do is to summarize that in bullet form and then present a graphic that we can take a look at, so if you'll bear with me. Before we get started, both companies are good companies. We have a longer work history with CAT, but we also have a recent work history with Miles. But nothing in this presentation is going to be negative. We have nothing bad to say about either contractors and we're not going to throw anybody under the bus. What we're going to do is present to you the information that we use to make a recommendation and it's as simple as that. So the summary of the CAT excavating work history that was submitted to the City of Blue Springs, it represents approximately 12 years of work from May of 1999 to the present. The largest job that they showed at that time is currently under construction. It's a $13.8 million job for Little Blue Valley Sewer District and that job is comparable to our Snybar expansion, okay? Excavation, building, archeon basins, things like, large concrete basins and things like that. We've talked with Little Blue Valley. I think that job's about a third complete and got glowing references from them. They're really pleased with the work the contractor's done. This job is not a roadway project, but it does speak to the type of work that CAT is capable of, is doing currently and also their bonding capacity, so. They submitted 133 job references and 15 were considered roadway work. Now, I went back over that figure today. I earlier had a smaller figure, but then I wanted to make sure that I was being fair and so even if a job had the title of a road on it and only excavation was done on it or only pipe work, I still included it as a roadway job. And so there were 15 jobs in that time period that will say are roadway work. The largest roadway type work submitted was 1.7 million Route 13 project in Lafayette County in 2010. And again, it was described as clearing, grubbing and excavation, but we consider that a roadway project. In that 133 projects, there are seven projects for the City of Blue Springs. We would give this contractor a great reference on all those projects. The largest project they performed for us was the Park and Ride just north of the Price Chopper. That was an $868,000 project. And the largest roadway project was a Mason School Road widening that's on the east side of Seven Highway and that was done back in 2007 and that was three quarters of a million job, dollar job. But again, we're very happy with them and hope to continue to work with them in the future. Now, Miles Construction submitted seven projects and their work history represents two years from 2010 until the present. And the seven roadway projects, all the jobs they submitted were phased roadway construction or widening under traffic and that's the type of job that a Woodschapel Road corridor will be. So they're all similar. The largest job they submitted in that time was 21.5 million reconstruction of K-7 and Johnson Drive interchange for the City of Shawnee. That was in 2011. The next largest job was a $13.2 million multi-lane arterial roadway construction for the City of Lenexa in 2012. Now their work history includes a project for Blue Springs. It was $4.9 million. It's our Seven and Colburn Road project that was completed January this year. And they also did a $3.9 million Lee Summit Road project in Lee Summit, Missouri, completed in 2010. And all the references that we contacted were solid references for this contract, for that type of work. What this shows is comparative work histories. Yeah, that's fine, thanks, Tyler. This will be a comparative work of the work histories and what we're doing, we're showing here the seven, a comparison of the seven largest projects that were submitted to us by the two contractors. On this vertical or Y-axis, we've got project cost in millions of dollars, goes from zero to 25 million. The legend, CAT is in blue and Miles is in the red. And I hope you can see that. And this line that you see scribed through here is our Woodschapel Road project. That's basically a $13 million project. And so what the data would suggest, in the last two years, based on these two points, Miles contracting has done two jobs in the last 24 months that are either at the same dollar amount or larger than our Woodschapel Road project and they are of the same complexity and scope. All right. Now, what the data would also suggest by looking at these data points is that of the seven largest projects submitted by CAT over the last, well, since 1999, they've not undertaken or completed a project of this size. All right. So based purely on the work history, our recommendation was for the project to be awarded to Miles. It's got nothing to do with CAT being a bad contractor because they're not. We've worked with them, we're happy with their work. I know these guys, they're good guys. All we're saying is, we're looking at this $13 million project and it's my responsibility to report to you the work history that has been submitted to me by the contractors. And that's the information that I present to you this evening.
Okay, are there any questions, Mr. DeGrae? Any questions?
Yes, right. Yeah, I'll get to the question in a moment, but I want to bring a little bit of the communication I had earlier with Administrator Johnson and yourself. And that is that a lot of information has come my way and I'm going to guess my colleagues as well within the last 24 hours. Matter of fact, this binder right here is on the subject and it's sitting here as I walked in to review. So, and I communicated that I've clearly, I work full-time, I don't have the time to review all of this and absorb it all to make the best decision with all the information that people want us to review. And I also submitted a list of proposed questions or topics and areas that I could be asking, but obviously there's not enough time for you to respond either. So I guess my question here is, at this juncture, I could say, hey, I want to take a couple weeks to evaluate all this and my trade-off is, is what is the cost to this project, to this issue if we take the time to absorb all this information, review it? You provided a good summary here tonight, but I'm wondering, what is the cost of a two-week delay? I know this is an important project, get done, so you made good information with the time that you had to work with and from what I've heard, so I guess I'm understanding the consequences. What are the trade-offs?
I think we could easily postpone this for two weeks, Councilman. I mean. I mean, my information's gonna be the same. As far as any kind of deadlines or things like that, I can't tell you in good faith that this is gonna damage the outcome of the project, so I'm not going to, I'm not going to throw any kind of fear in anybody's heart that there's a decision that has to be made tonight, so I mean, I'm your representative, I need to tell you, you know, what's going on and how things are gonna work out.
I appreciate that, and as I said in the email, that you guys have safely delivered the projects on time, and I've got no reason to doubt your recommendation here tonight either.
Sure, appreciate that.
Any other comments from Council? Councilman Edmondson?
Your Honor, I took the liberty and had some conversations with Councilman Levy this morning on his trip sporadically as he was driving, and he wanted me to at least convey that we, as District Two, are very excited to see this come before us. This is something that I think, and I'm on a grandstand, so bear with me on this one, but this is something I think the residents of District Two have been looking for since 1994, when Adams Dairy opened up. The outcry of, you know, what are you gonna do for our side of town, has been long heard. And in all respect to Councilman Fowler, I think, you know, though we could put this off for another couple of weeks, you know, it'd be nice to get this thing going. We waited a long time to get it going. Hopefully, we might be able to come to some kind of decision this evening.
Any other comments?
Your Honor, I just want to acknowledge, I appreciate Oliver's comments tonight on record. Certainly, if the Council chooses to table this and postpone it, we will respond to your questions or inquiries, or however you would want us to handle that. I'm not aware, I don't believe Oliver's aware of any information that would be presented to us in the next two weeks that would change the recommendation that we've made tonight.
That is correct. The one thing, Mr. Johnson, I would ask Bob, there are some timelines in the contract language that I'm not familiar with. I just want to make sure we don't push it out and then void the bid, but you understand my comments relative to any type of contractual information that's been agreed to.
Right.
Okay, we need to, taking into consideration that Councilman Levy is absent, Councilman Bowerman is abstaining, at least four of you, and it requires four votes to pass this.
And does that, since it's not an ordinance?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, still requires four votes, so I think that might be something you need to take into consideration, you know, when I entertain a motion on what you want to do.
Okay, then, I guess, Your Honor, I mean, the, again, I don't know what I don't know, and I haven't reviewed everything that's been submitted. I don't know if that's gonna change, if any new information would change the position that I hold tonight. I mean, if we're, the trade-off is, is what do we do on time? You know, if it's a, I acknowledge that the district residents, our whole community's been waiting for this to happen for some time. We voted for it in 2008. Everybody's ready to pull the trigger, so I understand that. It's just the trade-offs of, you know, doing the due diligence, all the people that are trying to get us information. Have the rest of you all had a chance to review everything and absorb it all? Did you see anything that we should discuss here tonight?
Well, I've spoke before, so I'll speak again. I know I've been contacted, it's on, through numerous emails, phone calls, and personal visits that have come in and addressed the situation and have lobbied for different points of view as far as who they think are better. I guess the question that staff has said, that, you know, if we delayed this two weeks, would that change staff's opinion in any way? And Oliver, you've worked with both of these clients, you've, you know them, I would assume, fairly well from what you've told me, and I have to respect that. We're looking at a 1.35% difference in this project, which, in the overall project, that's very little. I guess, from, to give it some full airing, you know, I guess we're looking at, you know, and what I get is, you know, you're looking at a Kansas side business to a Missouri side business. You're looking at one maybe that employs local and deals locally, or one that possibly deals otherwise, though that hasn't been presented to me, so that information I don't know. I mean, they may purchase fuel here, they may buy their food here. I mean, some of those employees may live here, they may use subcontractors that are in the area. That kind of information, I haven't presented. I've only been presented one side. But I still feel that, given the work history and the closeness of all these bids, that we should be able to make a decision tonight. And I would like to hear from the other councilmen on this. This is a major decision, and I think you all need to join in.
Councilman Carter?
Well, I too have been lobbied by a lot of different people on both sides of this issue as to which one's better, and this is, I guess, what my mother always told me, these are the days you get paid for, because this is not gonna be an easy decision, and somebody's gonna walk out of here not very happy with us. But the fact of the matter is, and something that won't change in the next two weeks, is this graph that Dr. DeGrae has put up for us, and the fact of the matter is, CAT's never done anything like this. They've, I mean, if all things were equal, you would give it to the Missouri side company that has Blue Springs subcontractors, but all things in this case are not equal. According to that graph, they've never done anything even close to this. And this is a project we've waited on since 1994, as Councilman Edmondson spoke about. We think it's gonna be the gateway, will be the gateway, to the west side of Blue Springs, and a lot of great things are gonna happen as a result. And I don't, in my judgment, and again, nothing against the folks at CAT, but in my judgment, if they've never done something like this before, why would we let them start with this project?
Councilman Clavel?
Well, I think my fellow councilmen have expressed pretty much the same feelings that I have. Yeah, it's on. I'm pleased that we have two excellent companies that are presenting here, but I think, Dale, your comments about the scope of work and those issues are right on target by my analysis. I will say, in answer to your question, Ron, I've had the opportunity to read all of the emails and information that have come to me. I've talked to quite a few people, both on the phone and in person, and I agree with Councilman Edmondson. I think we can make this decision tonight.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and comment on it. Most of my confidence tonight on this decision is coming from what staff has delivered on the previous projects and their recommendation. And I respect that our citizen base out there, our contractors have tried to lobby us this afternoon, and yes, I'd love to have absorbed all that information, but in the timeframe it was given, it just wasn't possible for me. But I'll go with the confidence of staff and make my recommendation to proceed with Miles.
Any other discussion before I accept a motion to approve the resolution? No, I would accept a motion to approve the resolution.
Your Honor, I'll make that.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion? We've had a number of discussions. CNN roll call, please.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Abstaining.
I'm sorry. Councilman Clavel?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Here, with Councilman Bowerman abstaining and Councilman Levy absent.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to Merrill announcements. You know, last month, we talked about and recognized some thoughts to ponder from, well, before I do that, there's one other thing I need to say. And most of you watched TV over the last few days, and it's been a heart-wrenching thing to watch the devastation and the loss of life the past few days with the tornadoes that have swept throughout 12 states in our country. So let us not forget, and let's have our thoughts and prayers with the people that have been affected by that, you know, including some right here in our own state of Missouri. So let's not lose sight of those people that are experiencing something that is devastating to them. Now we will move to thoughts to ponder. Last month, we talked and recognized some thoughts to ponder by people of African-American descent, because February is considered Black History Month. Well, some of you might not know that March is considered Women's Month. It was started in 1987, and tonight I want to share with you a quote from a person that I think most of us know, have heard of, we don't know her, because she was born in 1880 and died in 1968. She was famous for her many achievements in life despite being both deaf and blind. She has been a role model of achievement in the face of adversity. If you haven't figured it out yet, it's Helen Keller. She had a quote that said, "When one door of happiness closes, another opens. But often we look so long at the closed door that we do not see the one which has been opened for us." I think those are very profound thoughts from a lady that had an effect on this country. That concludes my thoughts to ponder. I do have some visitors' appearance forms. I have Linda Taylor. Linda Taylor, that you want to speak before the Council? I have a speaker appearance form.
Hello, hello, thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I am Linda Taylor, President of Rome Construction. I have, I too have been very excited about the Woodschapel Road project, and I have, this is the day, it was put in the Blue Springs Examiner, August 12, 2010. This has been on my bulletin board since that day, for my whole company to see. We are located at 604 Southeast Industrial Drive in Blue Springs. We've spent a great deal of time preparing, we are a concrete construction company. Our bid was to do the paving and the bridge approach and the alternate on this project. We're very excited, and CAT Construction was the low bidder. Obviously, you have already voted to give this project to Miles. I'm very disappointed. Me and my employees will now have to drive through that project every day, knowing that we are highly qualified, which I don't think our qualifications were presented to anyone before this presentation was made to the Council. And we're going to have to drive there, through there, knowing that we were the low bidder, we're very qualified, and that the city of Blue Springs is choosing to spend more money on the project than the low bidder myself and CAT Construction. It's become apparent tonight that the buy local and keep our dollars in Blue Springs program that Blue Springs says they have in place doesn't apply to the city officials. I am very much like the city administrator, public works director of the city of Parkville. I'm really, truly disappointed it's come to this. This $175,000 could be used to fund other projects that Mr. Johnson mentioned in the newspaper on Saturday, that the Blue Springs area is underfunded for. I do not feel that the qualifications of the total package for CAT Construction was fully looked over before the determination was made. Been in this business 20 years, I'm tying in the bridge approaches and the paving for the project on Front Street that is very much like this project. It's been an exciting project. We have a long history of paving and tying in bridge approaches in the greater Kansas City area. I'm sorry that you don't feel that the dollars should stay here in Blue Springs. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Jason, Rue, where are you gonna talk?
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Unfortunately, I think procedurally, we're probably a little late on this. I provided materials to all of Council, and I understand some individuals weren't able to read those, and I did provide those to you as timely as I could. Just to give everyone some idea, my client found out for the first time on Thursday that even though my client was low bid, they were gonna be passed over for a project that was gonna be awarded the following Monday. We went into action as soon as we could, scheduled a meeting with Mr. DeGrae, and then began contacting the city council immediately thereafter. So from a timing standpoint, if you didn't have an opportunity to read everything, first of all, I encourage you to do so. I think there's some things you need to know about who you all have just granted a $13 million contract with. Second of all, I think for future reference, I want you to consider CAT Excavation as a reputable contractor who hires reputable subcontractors, and a job this size is not beyond their ability. I think that chart is a little bit misleading, it deals with a two-year scope, it doesn't include all projects, but nevertheless, the chart says what it says. You know, CAT has the ability to do a project of this size and of this scope, it wouldn't bid on it if it wouldn't. A bonding company wouldn't give it bonding authority if it couldn't do it. I mean, that's the essence of this business. They don't go out there and chase risky contractors. CAT's not a risky contractor, been around since 1999, employs people who've worked there for many, many years, worked on projects this size or bigger. Ms. Taylor, I think, said it best when, you know, she said this is a project she, as a Blue Springs business owner, has looked forward to. I mean, the newspaper she's holding is yellow, it's been on her bulletin board so long. I mean, this is the kind of thing, I'm from Blue Springs, I was born here, you know, this is the kind of thing that people in Blue Springs need to remember when we're giving out these kind of projects, to look in our own backyard first and not look into Kansas, because Kansas is not doing us any favors. Contractors are not going to Kansas and winning bids over Kansas contractors. We're at a distinct disadvantage over there, and I think there needs to be some willingness for the Council to look after our own. I mean, the people who are involved in this project were gonna be suppliers in Blue Springs, they were gonna be surveyors in Blue Springs. It was gonna be a team effort, you know, and in the contracting world these days, that's what we have, is we have a team effort with various subcontractors, various suppliers, surveyors, engineers, attorneys, you name it, who come together and form a team. And somehow, that got lost in charts and whatever else in this discussion, and I don't know, I don't know how, what can be done at this point in time, but I do think that the Council has a duty to look into the contract they've hired, looked into the contract they didn't hire, and if there's something that can be done at this point in time, reconsider this decision. It's an important decision, not just to CAT Excavation. I mean, they'll have to go out and find other work, that's what they do. But it's an important decision for us as a city, it's an important decision for other contractors who may want to bid someday. It's not a good precedent to go against low bids. It does tend to turn off contractors for future bidding. Contractors rely on putting together quality bids, competitive bids, so they can win them. If they don't win them, even when they've succeeded that, then you are not giving them an incentive to bid in future work. And I think that's something the city council should also consider. If there's any questions that I can answer tonight, Mr. Bailey has also signed up, he's the owner of CAT Excavation, to speak. If there's any questions that we can answer, we'd be happy to do so. You know, the materials, again, I provided you, I think, speak for themselves, but I did want to make sure that everyone knew how we felt in this decision, and while we respect Mr. DeGrae's recommendation and the Council's decision, you know, it's just one we simply disagree with, and we want the Council to know how we feel about this decision.
Any questions, Mr. Rue?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, first of all, I want to say you do your client a great representation, and I appreciate you coming tonight and the emails. I did see the report you did with the pictures from the Channel 9 report and everything.
Yes.
I understand that. I've also talked with, or engaged staff with that, and relative to finding out that Miles, the company that was awarded, actually did the job down south at Seven and Colburn, and so we had firsthand reference relative to how they performed a job recently in Blue Springs, and, you know, I understand the concern that, you know, they have a problem in Parkville, but again, it seemed like it was satisfied, our city staff was satisfied relative to that issue as well. You bring up a lot of good points on Buy Blue Springs, I appreciate that. You know, a lot of this does come from staff and their history and their evaluation of these sensitive issues. This was a very close bid, and in that sense, it's good for the citizens of Blue Springs to have such competitive bids, and I think we should all... to have such competitive bids, and I think we should all appreciate even that much more for all the work that you put into it.
Any other questions? Matt, thank you, Mr. Rue.
Thank you.
Mr. Bailey?
Mayor Alderman, I want to thank you for letting me speak here. I just can't believe what just happened. You know, we got called by your Public Works to bid your job before it was even advertised, and it's just, I can't believe that we would spend, three of us, two and a half weeks, bidding a job to know that we was low on and didn't get. We're very well prepared to do the job, we was very well subcontractors that was going to follow us to do the job. You know, in the due diligence efforts, I was never called in ahead of time to sit down and show our team. I can see where Oliver might have concerns if he thought we was going to do it all, but we wasn't going to perform all the work. We had subcontractors lined up, we could have sat down and went over it, and I think it would have been a different outcome. You know, we had a lot of subcontractors, local, year-round, we buy all of our piping from either HD Supply or Wind Water from your town. We buy all of our fuel from John Moore Oil from your town. Jeremy Powell is our surveyor from your town. It just goes on and on. I mean, and you're bringing a Kansas contractor to do what we could have done right here in Missouri, local. I just don't know what to say, other than it's very poor decisions on all four of you that voted. I just don't know why you couldn't have tabled it, we could have went to Oliver, sat down, went over our team, he never asked for our team that we were going to build a project with. You know, we're building a thirteen-point-eight million dollar project right now, he said our reference is golden. And we do a lot of work every year, and can you imagine what it takes to do twenty million dollar worth of work in small jobs in a year versus one thirteen million dollar project over two years that was phased out in five phases? The project was well within our means. I mean, just like Jason said, if the bonding company would be the first one that wouldn't feel comfortable with us, they wouldn't write us a bond if they didn't think we could do it. Why would they want to do that, taking a chance of costing them money? So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Again, I appreciate you all bidding on this job. You know, it was a tough decision, I know, for these four gentlemen sitting here and making that decision tonight, and so I don't think you should feel bad about it, because you did get raven reviews from Mr. DeGrae that you are a quality company. And I mean, don't hang your head down low because of that. And you've done work for us, and I'm sure you're going to continue to do work for us in the future, if you so choose, if you so choose. That's all I have. I have no more visitors' appearance forms, so I would accept a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Called in favor, aye.
Aye.
Close, no. We adjourn.